Okay, thank you very much for coming. The folks who gave up their land to be here. And we're gonna start by having the candidates introduce themselves and give a short presentation of themselves and what they want to know about the candidates. So we'll start with you Jen, and then discuss that I'm going on, is that okay?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for putting this on, it's great to be here. My name is Jen Wilson, I'm resident of Hawaii. I've been in Hawaii for over forty years, I'm resident of Hawaii for twenty years. And I'm retired, so I'm a retired culture, I'm there now eleven years. So most of my background in my business are journalism, so that's kind of what I'm looking at before the council. Next thing more, you know, it's a business, I'm gonna start treating it as a business. So, that's me.
Hello, hi, I'm all for getting here tonight to have you in here. My name is Mary Rivera, candidate, I was born in Brazil. I graduated from the high school in nineteen seventy, and I was very fortunate to be able to live with most of our local communities and have their children live, work, and raise their families in their own community. I say I'm lucky because I was able to observe and watch how this island that I've been living in so much grow. And I participated in government, I participated in relocation to protect this island and to protect its valuable resources. So in the past three years, that has been my life's work. I now seek county council petition to, as a, as a natural progression in my life's work, I'm serving my community. And I have experienced some of that, working on the county council, and I know as much as possible to know about this beautiful island and its people. And I wanna help make this place a better place for them. Aloha.
Hello, my name is Richard Abbott. I'm the son of an Air Force sergeant from Hickman Air Force Base and a volunteer environmentalist and fellow of mine. I unfortunately didn't get to spend the rest of my life here when I was growing up. We moved the children to the mainland for education and opportunities, but I would return and would like to raise my grandchildren there. Didn't have the opportunity unfortunately to raise my children. But for that opportunity is why I'm running, I wanna be able for families that are extended to be able to reside in Hawaii and not have to send some of their children back to the mainland, wake up families. I worked for thirty years after my education at Western Washington University and the Evergreen State College where I had a public policy analyst and administration, doing Bachelor of Arts. And I worked as first as a volunteer for a nonprofit organization called Travel Unlimited, worked my way up to president, CEO, and corporate executive. And then it was made to the US Canada Pacific Sand Treaty team as a negotiator when we had a fish war between Canada and the United States over the threatened extinction of Pacific salmon. And it forced all of the players to have to sit down and learn to work together. And in that process and with the state of Washington, when I worked for them in charge of the salmon money for their habitat restoration work for your act in Washington DC, and worked in Congressman John Diggs' office, as well as with now Governor Jay Anger when he was a congressman. And we understood the mountain to sea just like our ancient Hawaiian ancestors did. And it was the way we were able to tie the habitat together back to put together one bigger salmon plan. And I'd like to use my experience and expertise to do the same thing here. Reform the way that we do land management back to the traditional.
So the forehand that we've been using for these forums, we had invited representatives of the Hawaiian community, but that person wasn't able to attend this evening. And do look for a substitute, but I'm sorry to say I can't find someone. So I'm gonna start out with that same protocol, not as a Hawaiian myself, but asking the first question that was put out by the Hawaiian community representative, we had a poll up the first meeting with this. Before I do that though, introduce myself, I'm Justin Kuba with Recycle Hawaii.
And I'm Bob, we're for Recycle Hawaii and for the state of Hawaii.
Okay. And so how this forum came together, we decided that it would be a good idea to go out as environmentalists because our constituents are environmentalists and ask questions related to the environment of the different county council candidates. There's a lot of important issues coming up before the council this next term, which one we will be electing. And we wanted to give voters a chance to hear what you had to say on specifically environmental issues. And although we don't have a lot of people in the audience this meeting, we will take the video of what happened here and get it up online. And then you could either link to it from their own websites, or you can turn to their to see. So it'll be sort of a virtual thing. We are taking questions from the audience, we have some cards up here. And if you can follow that format, you can write your, you can write your questions up here, we will ask it from here now. Okay, so starting with the question, and it's a question that really moved me, Julia Harey Molani is the person who asked the question Monday night. Let's start with that. How do you express your love for the land, your home, my head, and your personal life?
Well, in the tradition of Mark Twain, I'm a little up there. And I have been both here and on the mainland, a fisherman and a hunter. I know every creek, every river, every stream, probably forty-eight out of the fifty states of the United States, because fishermen do that. I think that an appreciation of the outdoors is something that all of us here in Hawaii value and have. And I think that the future of Hawaii comes from recognizing ecological values, which are also the spiritual values of the culture here. Rather than continuing in the ways of the modern society, I would like to see us all pleasantly back into an ancient understanding, which is both ecological and spiritual here. And I think that the specialness that we have here is something that requires us to show leadership, not just for Hawaii, but for the whole country.
Aloha, and what it represents to me, to this land, is a familial relationship. As long as I am native Hawaiian, my roots go generations deep in this area of Hawaii. And I say familial relationship is because what is spoken of, the Akuwaka concept of living, this island has the most intact Akuwaka system. And we need to preserve that. I have spent my legal career working with community because I knew the importance of the connections of our people to the land and what happens to it. What you do to our resources will affect the native peoples' cultural traditions. There are things that I have done in my lifetime, and the reason I got involved with politics and community service is because in my short span of becoming an adult, I recognize and I witnessed a vast change in our island. The things that I did as a child, which is very important, hunting, fishing, working on the farm, those things, I want my kids and the rest of the generations to come to experience that because that's where I'm born, bonds me into this land. I have, I cannot explain my affection for this place because it's unexplainable. It is a sense of belonging and a sense of place that every native Hawaiian is connected to this island. And that's the way I'm learning because I want to complete or continue my quest to preserve this island as much as we can for our kids and not make it a, an urban city. Because this island is special, and it will always be special. Thank you.
Every culture that's ever existed, the land was important to them. Without the land, there was no food, there was no hunting. The land is the source of everything that people do. It's just, I think now we've lost some of the concept. One of the things I've always thought for the last few years is, pardon my expression, I think was the nature of piss for what we've done to our planet. And it's sad, it's really sad, and I think part of the job as county council owner, all of us, every citizen, is to do something to protect the land and to bring it back to what it was a hundred years ago. It was really productive and people respected it. We, if we don't do something, we're going to be in serious trouble down the line. To me, Hawaii, particularly the Big Island, is a very magical place. I love it here, I grew up on the mainland, but there's something special about this land, about this land, and I wanna do everything I can to protect it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So my next question, now I'm Recycle Hawaii, is actually a series of questions. And what I'm gonna do is have the folks answer true or false for the show counts. And we're doing this to just kind of let out a framework for an understanding about what you might think was waste management issues, though we try not to use the word waste as a verb, we're talking about how people waste things. You like to talk about resource management because we see a lot of things that people want to discard as resources. So all of these questions are related to resource management, and I'm gonna ask you true or false, and I think right now. It's not to make you mad or want, but it's a kind of a fun way to open up the dialogue about these issues. So, true or false, there is no residential curbside pickup on Hawaiian Island? If that's true, do you think that's true right now? Do you think that's false, right now? Okay, it is false, there's residential curbside pickup, but it's done by an island sector. Yeah, so it's a little bit of a trick question, it's a trick question, but in asking it, you know, we get to demonstrate that there is confusion about that because, you know, here the county council talked about how there's no curbside pickup, but really what they're saying is they don't do it, but there are businesses that do it. Okay, so now this question, this question is related, true or false, it is against the law for companies picking up recyclable materials from local households to deposit those recyclables in the mixed recycling bins at county transfer stations? True or false? So if you have any by that. Okay, so now that we've established that there is curbside pickup by the island sector, if they come to your house to get your discards and put your recyclables in a nice little package on the side, are they allowed to pick that up from your house and take it to the mixed recycling bin at the transfer station? If you think they are allowed to do that, and some people commit to do that, then you would say false. Okay? So I'll ask again, is it against the law for that company to take your recyclables to the mixed recycling bin when you're taking them? When you go to the transfer station, you see there's a bin there, right, where you can put the mixed recyclables? So if a company comes to your house and puts up your recyclables, can they put it in that bin for you? That's not, you go, yes, you go, yes, they can, you said, yes, they can, you go, yes. Yeah, is it against the law, that's what I'm asking, is it against the law for them to put your recyclables in that bin for you? True? False? It is against the law. They're not allowed. Those bins at the transfer stations are for residential self haul only. And that's a county provision. So everything that I'm gonna be discussing with you tonight about recycling and all this to county, to my business. There's, the county regulation says those mixed recycling bins are for residential self haul only. So no events, no businesses, and nobody picking up recyclables, but it's still possible to happen. Okay, true or false, plans to build an incinerator in Hilo include redirecting discards from Waimea, Kona'aka, La'au'a, Hoi'au', Hawa'ua, and Wa'ia'ua to East Hawaii? True or false? True? It is true. So right now the county is making a commitment to deliver ninety-five thousand tons of municipal solid waste per year, and how they are planning to do that is to take the discards from Waimea, Kona'aka, Hoi'au', Hawa'ua, and Wa'ia'ua. Okay, true or false, state-of-the-art waste-to-energy plants have no emissions? True? A state-of-the-art waste-to-energy plant, state-of-the-art, very best out there, will have no emissions? True or false? False. Yeah, they do no emissions. Primarily for the dioxide, no max emissions, yes, no emissions. We're almost, we're almost there. True or false, styrofoam is a kind of plastic? True or false? True, it is true. Actually, this is the first time so far I've been on that, right? It's kind of plastic, it's number six plastic. The county does not accept it. If you wanna recycle styrofoam in, on Hawaii Island, you have to take it to Mr. Hayes in Hilo. But it has to be clean, otherwise it won't be there. Okay, the last one, and you're off the hook. Existing county of Hawaii recycling programs remove the majority of recyclable materials from the waste stream. True or false? So these are the existing programs that, that is recycling bins, the greenways, the programs that the county has right now, they're getting most of, the majority of recyclables out of the waste stream. True or false? Well, the programs that they have right now are effective and that the majority of the recyclables come out of the waste stream. Yeah, like the programs that they have right now, okay, do they work to get most of the recyclables out, or are there still a lot of recyclables left in the waste stream? What would you say, Jen? Okay, so the correct answer is most of what's recyclable is still in the waste stream. The county's rate, the effective rate, is thirty-seven percent, we're catching thirty-seven percent of anything that's recyclable from the waste stream. So that just shows you kind of what you're inheriting, you know, as county council person that's gonna protect the state of waste and resource management.
I just wanted to mention a few things. Again, on the cards, we've already got some good questions in from you people, and this is really your call on, it is your question, so we can do a good intelligent vote. The cards are right here, the pins here, and we will be asking those questions this evening. Thank you very much. I just wanna mention a few other items. The voting, July tenth, which is tomorrow, July tenth, is the last day you're registered to be able to vote in this primary. So if you know anybody that hesitates to vote, and need to do it tomorrow, and they are not able to vote in this primary election. And July twenty-eighth will start the absentee voting, and August seventh, and then of course the primary election is on August ninth. I wonder if you could share with us, what has qualified you to be a county council member? What is your resume as a race to county council business? And what are your qualifications to represent us? How it sort of ties together to why you can, why you think you should be able to be on the list?
I think we start with my name?
My qualifications, as I said earlier, I started at the county council almost ten years ago. Prior to that, I, my background is three years as a paralegal. And five of those years I spent living with the legal society of Hawaii. My district covered whole two, basically, and I served our senior citizens and also our disabled population. I helped seniors with their different foster directives, did seminars about that, and I also helped our social security beneficiaries of foreign residents with disabilities. During that time, I also actively engaged in lawsuits. When things in the community became such that obvious, our government was not helping the process to protect our shore islands and to protect our resources. So to make a long story short, I was a party to two Supreme Court decisions that mandated our government, our state government basically, that they are not allowed to delegate their authority on finding out if a proposal will have an impact on the environment and on the right of Hawaii rights. That's a big decision in favor of our environment. And what that, that has helped me in my, in my career, to know that although we have lands that protect rights of our people and protect our environment, unless we have, or unless we aggressively address and break through the fourth front, most of our processes go unchecked. So that was my, that was my calling, as you might say. I am not inside development, I am for lawful development and following the procedures and processes that are, are meant to protect us. So we as council people, our job, won't be that hard. By the time things come to the council, it's supposed to have been addressed at various levels. And that's where I feel that having done this in the outside for thirty years, and met some of these people that felt the same way I did, and we took it the next step from a citizen, made the commitment, to file lawsuits because that is the only way, the first way that you will get the attention that government needs in order to take care of our citizens and our citizens. All of that was greatly tied to the Native Hawaiian issues, which is very close to my heart because that, that is who we are, that is what people love about styrofoam. Because we are tied to the environment. You take the environment away, you take the resources away, you destroy the resources, you destroy the people. And so...
I forgot the question.
What was the...
The moral of the law.
Thank you. And so that brought me, knowing that I needed to take it to even a further level. And then we became involved with county council governor. I worked for council member collateral, as his assistant for two of his terms, and wrote his, wrote his legislation. I'm very proud of the TMOM on Maui and Tapi, I wrote that, for him of course, and, and other very, very great deals. But like I said, this has been a quest for me, being from here. This is, being a council member for me is the last step in my, my mission, you might call it that, in doing what I can to address the needs of our rural community. I'm a rural girl, I hunted and did everything, my dad who never had a son, I was, I was my dad's son. So I, I can fish and hunt with the best of them, I understand the rural community, I understand this community, I understand the farming community, and I really wanna bring that perspective to the council. Thank you for your time, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
The question was, how have I served as the county member?
It was in three sentences, but they all ended up the same place. What has qualified you to be a county council member? What is your resume as a race to county council business? And what are your qualifications to represent?
Okay. Starting in Olympia, Washington, at the county level, I served, I was elected a freeholder in Hurston County, which is the state capital, nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen eighty-three. I served the county council there as their community liaison for nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-one. I was a candidate for the county council in Hurston County in nineteen ninety-one and lost, and then was a candidate for Oregon that also lost. Starting in nineteen nineties here on the Big Island, I worked with both Julie Jacobson and Bob Jacobson, who went on to be county council members here, helping them develop their positions on water and wastewater, land use. I volunteered for the community of Oceanview. I volunteered for the community of Oceanview in the beginning on our water plan project and helped write some grants. And I was on loan from the Hilo Resource Conservation and Development Office. And then also worked on the plan after the grants had been received for about a year. Most recently, my contracts have been with Native American tribes on the mainland, helping them secure enrollment in tribes and also addressing the concerns of Hawaiian families that are enrolled in Native American tribes who are currently being visited in Wixak, I have considerable experience at the state and the federal level also, and have decided I would like to come back down to the county level to see what I can do.
I'm not sure there are any qualifications to be a county council member. I guess the biggest qualification, I think, that anybody that serves the county or works with the county is the ability to listen, analyze, and make some fair decisions based on the facts. Most of my career had been in journalism and business. Of course, in journalism, we spend a lot of time criticizing the county, so I guess you might say, um, it's like, it's time to put up or shut up. So I think I know, I was served enough, and I understand how it works. I have a real desire to see a lot more common sense put into the organization. And obviously, the business part of it is very important, but, um, I think I can, I, I have the ability to analyze and look, um, good listener, and I think that's what it takes. You gotta hear all sides of the story. You can't go in there with a preconceived concept without things to be. You gotta listen to what the public has to say and make your decision based on what you heard. But, um, I think I can do it. I think I have enough business background and working with civic, non-profit organizations, I can make our connection, appreciate your story.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna ask one more question. You have the Native Hawaiian, my folks who participated in our farm so far. Last night on Hilo, we had a group of three young men, Maia, Karu, Lawo, Kaiman, and Trask, it was Trask, I'm not saying they come in. They're kind of embarrassing, I remember that much, but they, they were one of the young men, and they asked a number of questions. I was impressed by how many of the questions were. But just sort of looking overall at one thing that was consistent, and something that seemed very important to them as young humans, they wanted to be sure that anyone who was elected to the county council had the understanding of Hawaiian history and understood how Hawaii came to be and the legal issues related to that transfer of power from the island to the United States. And the reason that was important to them was because they felt that anything that this government does, you know, has this underpinning from those events. And they didn't necessarily want anyone to say what they were gonna do about it and react to it, but they just, uh, it was important to them that anyone who was running for office this time period understood and explained. So my question to you on your behalf is, are you aware of the history of the overthrow of Hawaii? And you have, I'd like to make a few comments about that, if you could, if you could.
Yes, I'm aware of the history of the overthrow, and I spent a lot of time trying to understand all the issues that are with it and how the people feel. I know because, um, I relate to it from a standpoint, uh, my family is Native American background, and they've, they've already had some of the same issues on the land. So it's a very deep and important subject. Uh, I think I'm fairly well versed in it, but there's never been a bunch of others, and I know it becomes a very emotional issue, and it needs to be dealt with in a fair and understanding way.
My understanding of the overthrow is the turning point of my, of my life in understanding our native history. When I was going to school in seventies, sixties and seventies, I had a desire to learn about Hawaiian history. And every library, our own library, when I went and went to, even like Portland Library, there was no books on our kings and queens, and Hawaiian in, in our school were books on sugarcane, the Big Five, appropriation. That was our Hawaiian history. And so, not unknowing, I wondered, how come we don't have anything about Kamaheina? We knew of them. We were told these stories, but there was nothing to read about them. And while I was working at a law firm, that's when the sovereignty movement, a hundred year anniversary of the overthrow, there was a huge outpouring of the native community. And I went to Milwaukee, I went to a little town and participated in that mass, mass turnout of native Hawaiians. And that was the start of my understanding of what had happened a hundred years ago that no one told me about. And if I didn't know about it, anyone, people might think myself, you know, um, no one would know. That was my, and, um, I got involved with the starting movement at that time, but because of my, because of my legal background and my belief that not what was wrong was very wrong, it was done before, but in the current situation, the, the format that I could really get behind was a nation-to-nation type of sovereignty, because that would mean that we would be an independent nation within a nation. And that is what I totally supported, as well as a lot of other people. I know there are different conversions, and what you're talking about, about the, uh, what is going to be done, that is outside of our scope, that has to be decided in the United Nations. This is something that is unknown. If, I'm not sure if it's going to be held in my lifetime, but I certainly appreciate it, and I will support the movement of our people and getting that to this. So it was, it was wrong, it was wrong. I think I had to go. Thank you.
It still does amaze me how the history of the United States, well, all histories are written by the victors, but how much of Native American Hawaiian culture is completely ignored in history is, you know, if not even. But there, there's also an awful lot of us here, like myself, who concede here and have families here now, who are also looking to the future of the Hawaiians and all of our past. To heal the wounds of the past is necessary first for us to go forward. And I don't know what path the Hawaiian people would choose for themselves, but all I can say is that it's culture that deserves respect and make that choice for themselves.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm back to Mr. Cycle Hawaii, but, or by asking a question. I really appreciate all of you answering that question, and I feel confident that the young men who are at the farm outside, we really appreciate the things that you have to say, because there's a lot of place to understand and to understand, and that was me, and I wanted to make sure that it's you. Okay, so now my question, this is such a straightforward question. Do you support American Hawaiians' plans of building a house for a senator in Hilo?
No. Thank you.
You're not going to like my answer because it's not the answer. Because of my background, because of procedures and processes that has just ingrained me and, and the belief and trust in my laws, that is, that proposal is going through a process. So for me to say that I agree with it, I don't agree with it, I don't have all the talents, and I think it would do injustice to me, for me to make a decision like that without knowing all the facts. When it comes before the council, and I go on sit down, I will do everything that I can to make sure that whatever process we choose has to be safe for the community and I can live with it, so we can move forward into the next generation of self-sufficiency and energy, not being so dependent on fossil fuels for energy. And that's all I think I have to say.
I agree with the concept and not with the details of the thing. Except for the need to do research, I'll be one more aware, but the concept is.
I'd like to just do a follow-up on that. Commissioner Willie has put forward a proposed ordinance to withdraw the RFP. So because the three companies that have answered the RFP are burn technology companies and a lot of problems related to burn technology. And she's, um, also the really is saying, let's make this RFP at this time, at the first stage, more inclusive, of all ways of handling it. Let's make this a broad RFP, so recycle, composting, other known ways of treating that waste material that communities love, uh, could be addressed. As I guess a question would be, because this is coming up again before the council in the next few council meetings, um, would you have, would you support what council member Willie is asking for? That because this is such a restricted RFP, restricted as to who could do it, and put out an RFP that is more inclusive to more ways than on Hawaii Island, I mean, should we be burning waste on Hawaii Island, or should we be looking for other ways of treating it, as opposed to thirty percent recycling, a hundred percent?
I agree with your proposal, a broader RFP.
My, my answer is, the RFP, the RFP process is still a legal procedure that I'm not sure a resolution, um, can withhold it. So coming from where I, I can see, if that is a real issue, you would be, the council would not be, would not have that jurisdiction to stop the RFP process. It's a state, it's required by statute. So procurement and RFP, I'm not an attorney, but I cannot say that I can support stopping the legal process in all different contexts. So, um, if there is another means of stopping it, then that is not a legal means of stopping it. I'm not for that.
Yes, I agree with the effort on council, Willie. And, um, I think that it's an opportunity for us to stop before we make a bad mistake. Legal maneuvering aside to avoid making a critical decision and ignoring our zero-waste policy that we already have, and we're making progress for it, so thirty-seven percent perhaps, we say, of this, but, uh, which is still not enough to fuel the need necessarily of a burn center. Um, we'd have to do worse to fuel it, and we need to do it better. We just had a signing ceremony with the governor and our mayor, and we had to do about a Lohaw expansion. Mayor said he found it compelling, and yet he pushed forward a proposal that's, to me, going the wrong direction. With what we've seen recently in the hard science of climate change, as well as the federal administration's efforts to clean up our skies, any community that takes any step in this direction, to me, is irresponsible to everyone else in this country.
Uh, so now we'll take a question from our audience. Okay. What will be your stance on the GMO laws of the county? So we have had this question before, and I think this also relates to whether or not you support the ban of sand waste. Is that fair to add that to the question? Okay. So what will be your stance on the GMO laws of the county?
Uh, the GMO debate before needs to be completely transparent. We, uh, we need to know exactly what is in it and before you can make any decision on, on handling it, or what's gonna do. Uh, I think with that GMO in some form, whether it's in World War II, with the package for, uh, but, uh, if we know what they're putting in the product to produce the seeds, they have a comfort with that, and I would think we'd do much with GMO, should we know what, what they're doing, what they're putting in it.
I think the bill of interest that Ms. Willie has introduced, it adequately for now addresses some of the concerns of this community as far as GMO is concerned. That effectively prevents the GMO open field, um, from the way, and for now, if I understand it, this bill, which was not reviewed by the administration either, is a good starting point until studies are done. I know we already have people in the partners that are, um, reflecting GMO products for all the communities, and so if they for now, that is, um, bill of interest as an adequate test to prevent anything like, uh, happening here. Oh, there, there are, there isn't any lawsuit. So given that, um, I think that has a lot to do with how we bill on the tree, because the kind of things that affect our community as much as we can without it in all aspects.
I was a founding board director of the Toxic Coalition on the mainland, and representative of tribal leadership. And we pushed hard for pesticide and herbicide, man in the streams, naval streams and rivers, the sandoo. of the salmon reefs, and we were successful after a few lawsuits and then some time we were able to put together some management regimes. But the principle that underlied that work is the same thing that underlies this work, and others too, and that's personal choice. And not the choice of a farmer to choose what crop he wants to make money on, but the choice of a person to know what they put in their body and to make the choice to put it in and out. That's primary. And I will always feel that way. Now, we have to use GMOs in some ways. We have already to eliminate worldwide hunger, to be able to advance agriculture in areas that we know we're going to need to add in the next century. And here, we've seen that the people have spoken themselves and have strong feeling about it, that they think that needs to be respected, and I think it does too. I also think the state of Hawaii should follow Vermont and go to be the second state in the United States that uses state government powers to regulate. And if it takes a state-by-state approach until the federal government finally decides to deal with the hard issues and real science, I think that would be good.
I'm Paul tomorrow. I asked a question. I'm sorry to say that none of you have answered the question. Will you support the Hawaii County laws governing GMOs at this time?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just, yeah, I thought that was given.
Well, you didn't give it, okay? You talked all around it.
Yeah, no.
GMOs are the white elephant in this room at this very moment. Everybody talks around it.
Yes, I think all three are right, that they would support the, that they would support the, that they would support the current ordinance that the county now is in. When you say that, it sounds too much like a party.
Actually, I was trying to find eight ways that I was saying yes.
We are on most of all the questions on those answers out there, and if you ask, you can set a party answer. So if you have a question, I appreciate your attention.
Okay, my next question is about styrofoam. And I take up this, trying to figure out what my leg is made from styrofoam. It's a little styrofoaminess. We've heard it get a present one. So, but actually styrofoam is one of my favorite things. So I do a lot of zero-waste events, and during those events, we collect all the discards and we separate them and we wash them to make sure it can be recycled. And I can tell you firsthand that styrofoam is very problematic. If there's anything out there, the waste stream that's really going to mess up, it's styrofoam. I mean, when there's an event, has something that you like with. So I wonder if you can support a ban on the use of styrofoam for food service purposes, which means, you know, that styrofoam takeout thing, there's, there would be a comparable alternative that gets the food consumption.
I would never support a ban on styrofoam product, period.
Yes, I would support a ban on styrofoam. And there's lots of quality components that we can put together packaging to replace, including biodegradable things made from such things as mushroom fungus and hemp fiber and other things that needs to be explored. And here, it's a particularly bad problem because we do have such a large tourist industry and so much of our food is packaged both at the resorts and also in styrofoam, and it ends up on our beaches and in our parks.
The reason I'm asking this question is I attended the hearing last week at the county council where the county council voted on the Willie proposal that she would recommend to the administration officially as of the administration of the broad RFP being re-written. And I sat there watching the council members in a discussion, and it was embarrassing to the level that they didn't understand the environmental reasons, recycling reasons why it should be done. And it's like, I talked to a number of different people, and I've talked to some people around the other districts, voter councils, and the question would be, would you consider having an environmental advisory HUI and meet them regularly so they may help you on environmental issues? They could be your eyes and ears on the llama, I know. And by working with Christine, with others in the environmental community, there's so much knowledge, there's such a depth of knowledge on the side that the people want to share, that I think any council member that didn't have this environmental group with people to work with them would be missing so much. And I raise that question with a strong, sort of, wider understanding.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that in relationship to our solid waste problem here, we're decades behind the approaches on the mainland, and I dare say that we've missed a whole generation, almost two generations of opportunity for people to learn how to sort, wash, separate, and recycle and reuse bodies. It isn't something that is such a drastic change, but it's something that all communities are faced with, and we will be eventually here also as landfill fills up and as costs continue to rise. Most all the waste products that we refer to are actually commodities, there's markets that exist for them. And something I've been trying to have an opportunity to propose for years, so someone would understand, is green industries park, one in each port on each side of the island, where these materials that have been sorted and for recycling and reuse could be utilized by startup companies who could get a benefit from the port to have a site, an incubator, as well as an accelerator for those businesses and those industries. Work with the ILWU to have apprenticeship programs with the unions of skilled labor, as well as with colleges and our community colleges, to be able to provide young men and women with the abilities to learn the skills and continue in education that could push in that direction, as well as provide family-related jobs in the future. And I think that that was sort of vision made for a response to the solid waste problem there.
What was the question?
The question is-
Will you listen to it with advisory view?
Would you, would you choose or have suggested to you names of different expertise, whether in energy, whether in solid waste, whether in recycling, citizens, businesses here, and volunteers, maybe once a month, maybe once every two months, if a special issue comes up, to advise you and answer your question and help you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, my next question. So remember those bins at transfer station where someone who comes and picks up your discards is not allowed to take recyclables for you? That is county policy? So would you support the expansion of county mixed recycling services to include discards generated by residents but hauled by private companies? So if you're on the county council, would you support an initiative to change that so that a private company can come to your home, pick up recyclables, and take it to the mixed recycling bin on your behalf without breaking the law?
Yes, I would support that.
And then would they keep the revenue generated from what they're taking out, right? Yes, I support that.
Yes, I would. And I'd say that we're already moving in that direction, that they could be sort of like a commodity recycle areas. We could also start to address how we could use more of a waste stream for construction materials also to reuse. And I think not only de-criminalizing that, but actually providing more of that sort of a space for private businesses to serve that niche to be moving in that direction.
I think the chicken and raisins.
I think this question has been touched on a little bit, it was written before Kaua, and Kaua continues to be a rural area. Kaua has many natural areas of use such as black sand beach, rain damage, and saltwater cliff. Kaua has experienced many failed development dreams for disasters such as failed resorts, space stations, and recently, my organization, that was turned down twice by the State Public Utilities Commission. What is your view of Kaua, the future of Kaua? Is it keep Kaua Kaua or a space station?
I think the direction of Kaua needs to be in a house and your opinion, but the citizens is the way that they are the place, somehow they want this rural community to look, and the landscape, however it to be, you would have to listen to them.
I think we're going to see continued growth in Kona and Hilo, and that's where it should be concentrated. I think Kaua needs to remain wild. Agricultural and its economic approach still, I'd want.
I shouldn't say this, but I agree with Miley. It's after the people in Kaua, they're a beautiful place and all potential with this project, what does the community want their area to be strictly after that?
I had a form that follows up on that, and if you sit on the county council, you will make land use decisions on entire Hawaii and council decides to allow that. Often, previous county councils ignored the neighborhood objections to logic and voted with the developer. What way will you give to neighbors and community destiny?
I believe you have to give any way, because you're there representing the people. You have to listen what they want. Does that, does that end the whole part of the show, I think?
The people's right to make very little admission of where they want their, where they want to go is basically number one. And in order to be a fair and impartial decision maker, you would have to go out to the community to reach all of the people and do an informed decision based on people that not necessarily have the resources to come and express their views. So that's where I believe in proposals that come forward. When it gets to the council, there's a whole level of procedures and hearings, and that's where the participation needs to start also, so it comes with those comments. And then we would be able to see the full effect. And I say that because when I was working for government of Kaua, one of our biggest bills was to create the neighborhood underland bargaining agreements. Because of the development plan, decision-making for development, this is not the other, because we need that people, communities represented on the deal side. So now there's a balance in how we can review proposals. Another very important thing is the CBP. And that is the document that drives what the community wants. And that's very important that we complete the CBP, not only complete it, but implement it. And that is the job for the administration and the council people, council members, to work together. We need, it's a huge, it's a huge task, but it's one that needs to be done so we don't become incompetent. You know, that's, that's the thing that I like to see happen, that the CBP is a long-range planning document for little communities that people participate in and direct where they want to go, and we end up in there.
I've been on a lot of community planning processes, and I helped start the watershed efforts in the state of Washington that was used for salmon, that were built around that. And one thing that we learned there is the community has to participate first. We have a 10-year plan that we just extended the time for three years for the staff to be able to complete their work, because the community building came after the fact, not before, and came as the result of the staff debt, and is exactly what we need to avoid. It needs to be completed finally and used in the direction that it can be. I support Brenda Ford's attempts to force the planning director to be required to have a site visit when there's a subdivision. All this other talk is really good when it comes down to it, the way he visits the site. The neighbors are the ones that are being ignored because they're saying, wait a minute, you don't understand the place. Now, a lot of NIBU stuff does happen, none of us want things in our backyard of our lives destroyed. But at the same time, a county process that identifies whether there's an endangered plant or an endangered species on the site by referring to outdated materials on the internet, and doesn't require a site visit when the subdivisions promise water and power or other things in the future, and there's absolutely no way to apocryphal, to be able to do it, then you have a big problem. And yet there's still resistance to that effort. There is no common sense in that approach. And it may be expensive to visit every site, but as a county council person, I would do it for the planning director.
Okay, so this is something that I was sort of being familiar with after working at the office. The county has a program called Ransay, and this is a grant program where organizations can come to the county, it happens once a year, it's a year in the cycle, and they petition, and they say, oh, well, we have this event, or we have this project, and they go through the county council, there's limited pool of money, it's very competitive. And if the county approves of it, then they're given money to support their end or the organization of that, it's called the Ransay program. And so I do, as I said, a lot of zero-waste events, and this right here is what is left after we did Earth Day at Hilo. We had over 2,000 participants, and we set up a sort station, and we collected everything from the sort station that we wanted to discard, and we sorted it, and all of it, I was the phrase, a lady who took the rest of its plastic home and washed it to make sure that it could be recycled, because I hadn't had any more. And this is all that was left. And so I actually haven't taken this landfill yet, so it's a truly zero-waste event, but the diverting rate for that event, the 2,000 plus kids from- But the diverting rate for that event, the 2,000 plus kids from all of the island, was 99.965 percent. Okay? So with all that background, we do support a provision that would mandate event organizers seeking grant and aid funds from the county to organize their events as zero waste. We're not saying that they have to go all out like I did, but that they would organize their event as zero waste. And then that would be part of competitiveness. You know, if an event was zero waste, well, zero waste, that just, you know, the one path is zero waste. And that's the county's goal. Would you be willing to support a provision that would mandate that event organizers seeking grant and aid funds to organize as zero waste?
Uh, I would support it if it's a product, if they have a product that they're using. But in case they don't have a product, it was a paper procedure, a program, it wouldn't be as important in the waste factor of what you're talking about, but yes, I would support it.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. I would tell all those paths active zero waste. The Ransay program is for nonprofits 501(c)(3), and they do fund activities, social activities, everything. So that's a very good idea. Thank you.
Yes, since most nonprofits have a really good ethic already, community ethic and otherwise, I think they probably are already doing more than most event organizers. And I surely think that they should be rewarded for doing so. And incentives such as that in the program will go a long way towards rewarding that behavior and spending taxpayer money efficiently.
I just need to report that so far I haven't counted that I've asked that question. I'm six yes. Does it matter who gets elected on that?
Hey Bob, yeah, I came here to get three questions and answer. Yeah, well, I have an opportunity.
Yes, you can get that answer.
We'll give you one right now.
Thank you.
Okay, and we appreciate you submitting questions, and there's still time to submit more if anybody would like it. Will you vote for a home rule, and we allow a follow-up here too, Miley. Will you vote for a home rule in all issues for the county?
I support a home rule. I really do. And I cannot tell you now that I can support home rules for everything, because I don't know the issues that might be coming up about home rules. But I do support home rules.
I am a supporter of home rule, and I would support it. And I would also support a county charter commission to review and update our county charter as a home rule charter. And to suggest that both the legislative auditor and the county board position be a nonpartisan elected position for four years.
Do you want to follow up?
I support the council of home rule.
Thank you. Okay. Um, this is a question that comes up from time to time, and its title is going to be Pohakalua, the training area between the mountains. And I just want to get a little framework here because things can get destroyed real quick when we talk about Pohakalua or the military. And I'm a veteran of the Vietnam era. I served on the Iron Curtain on the German internal war in the early 60s. I trained at Fort Sill, Oklahoma as an artillery officer. I believe this is how we need, so strong military to protect that freedom. Many think there is too much military presence in Hawaii. Many think Pohakalua has been and continues to be, and when I say disfreated, I mean the island. The island of Pohakalua is disfreated by the military. As a council member, would you continue to welcome military presence with open arms and expansion at Pohakalua? Or would you discourage further military use and expansion?
Yeah, okay, I can handle options. I'm a leader and I'm made for decisions. I would support it, and I'm from a military family, and I'm from Hickman, and I had an uncle at Pearl Harbor, and two other uncles that were World War II prisoners who were. And I think that the 10 to 11 billion dollars we're spending a month still in Afghanistan and Iraq are outrageous. I think that the military presence here is not necessarily too big, but I do think that the military throughout the world needs to scale back.
Can I support more military here? Now, that's a jurisdictional question. I don't know how our county council as a body would have any influence as to, as much as to give our personal opinion.
Well, I think what we would, what people may be looking for is the county council to take a stance as a government unit representing the people of Waimea Island. We know you can't tell them what to do. Because you could say as a representative of the people of Waimea, we welcome you, and we want more. Or we think we've had enough, we don't want anymore, we would like you to go away. I think those are the things we're looking for. I realize it'd only be a wish to the county council. The people of Waimea, there'd be opinions on what's happening, but it's the life here.
And I think what they have here is that, I've seen, I've seen Pohakalua grow to the amount that it has. And I think anything more would have to be brought up to the community. That's the procedure that I would support. The military and the federal government bringing any future plans out to the community, not only the county council. So I think they need to hold, hold forums or public hearings about that to get a good feel of that when everybody can, can, um, like me. Thank you.
I would support the concept of being here mature with open arms of increasing useful and, and...
Okay, now we're getting personal. Do you recycle at home, and what do you recycle?
Uh, we recycle everything. My wife drives me crazy, but we recycle everything.
I'm gonna check.
I'm getting there. We recycle plastics and cardboard, and we do have a composting unit at the house, compost stuff on it. Okay.
Could you enlighten us on, I think you hit a rail, I think compost is very cool. Can you enlighten us a little bit how that works for you?
It's great, because I have somewhere to put it now. And then it takes a long time to, you know, it's just amazing. And it's clean, and everybody should have.
I attended high school in Indianapolis, Indiana, for Buff Jesuit Prep School. And at the time, when my mother met the mayor of Indianapolis, she told him he needed to start her side recycling program. She helped spearhead it in the early 1970s, making them the first municipality, as far as I know, in the United States that had one. My mother is gone now, but she still is in the back of my head. And even though I'm still building right now, I separate, and it sits there until it's completely separated and completely ready to go. And only then does anything ever go to the end.
Okay, we can present the last question for the audience. Okay. How will you represent we the people in a corrupt political system? How will you represent we the people in a corrupt political system? And if you have questions about it, you can call, would you like to say a few words to?
How do you deal with greed and corporate buy-off?
Like, the question is, how do you feel?
How will you represent we the people in a corrupt political system?
Well, I can control myself, and I will not be corrupt. And I think if everybody has that mindset, corruption happens when you knowingly participate in corruption. I believe in law and I believe in process, in process. And corruption has no place in government.
I agree, it has no place at all, and neither does greed, but unfortunately, the people we deal with do have greed. I reached a position in leadership in salmon recovery because I was willing to speak truth to power, to bend the will of the greedy to the desires of the larger community and to the future. And I would do so as a county council person. I would represent the people that are not born today as well as those that are. And I would put the economic interests of those, especially those who won't be here with us much longer, much after everyone is.
Well, I'll do a better, uh, small loud greed and corruption amendment as long as it falls under the county council jurisdiction, which is just a extent of interventionism. I think sometimes people in Delka and Santa Rosa, when the county position is caught overhand with the tail, I think they get off with too much, too much money. I just think there needs to be a lot of step for finance, but thanks to all the people who steal, deal with, you're stealing a lot. I think the punishment should be more severe.
Um, the governor was on the island last week, and as reported in the paper, he wants, he urged all the people of Waimea Island to support geothermal energy production. And I don't think the governor's really worried about power and energy on this island. I think he wants to see energy production go up on. So the question is, would you support building an underwater cable to send electricity from this island to a water for the other islands?
I don't think I can answer that without a lot more information. Part of the concept is, but I'm starting to need a lot more information before I can make a proper decision on it.
That has huge environmental aspects to it, and I know that studies are being made right now in Jopon. And there's a lot more information that we need to consider. And facts that we have to have before, I can actually say yes or no. Thank you.
No. And that cable, I could find someplace better to put it. But it's exactly in the wrong direction that we're going in this next century. We need to decentralize the power, we need to be using solar as much as possible, on location, delivering it where it needs to be. We don't need geothermal here because it doesn't provide us with the extra benefits that it does in northernly climes. Um, we could use the heat that's generated for it to produce more electricity, but we don't have a demand for it here. And exporting power in an underwater cable is not my idea of economic development for the next century.
Uh, I just wanted to follow up on the idea of the environmental cooling that's simple here. In Pohakalua, of course, in the whole area, this is a big issue because those are the people that suffer from the directions coming in, like the demons and the noise. And so they're highly vigilant on this issue, we've studied it. There are, I can, have you ten people that could sit with you on environmental cooling to help you understand the issues of and not pay and solve these problems, and all citizens of engineers, their nuclear engineers, just fully understand this issue. They live with it, they know. And, but it's just a moment of quiet. You've all said it, and I appreciate that, but it's just a moment. You don't have to go and spend a lot of money on this. People are willing to help the county council members. And so often, I listen to people in programs and hope they're worth it. Thank you.
Okay, no more questions for the audience? Okay, uh, so we'll have one last question from Hawaii. And then I, would you have another question? No, okay, maybe one more, and then I can give you folks a chance to make a positive statement. Did you have?
I'm done.
Are you done? Okay, good. Um, so I'm going to ask you if you understand the concept of producer responsibility? And whether or not you're favor increasing that.
Producer of products or?
Okay, so do you have two minutes to, do you have just one? Which of you have to answer the question?
Well, I think you're on to something here. Hidden costs have been the missing part of our understanding of whole economics of anything that we do. And so producer responsibility would certainly go a long way towards passing on those costs. And if we could identify them before they pass on and put them in the hands of those producers as a part of the cost of doing the business, I think that it would change a lot of the way that we do things. And we wouldn't need necessarily quite the progressive policies that we do this to catch up with what we should.
So the producer responsibility, what I get from this, is that we need more producers to be conscious about what they're creating so that it doesn't affect or have a further impact on our environment. And I think that was something I can, I can think about and say that if, it starts from there. Okay, start with the neighbors, that sort of thing. It starts at that point. So if, if they are responsible for their truth, and they are conscious about saving the environment, then I think they should, on their own, be, be looking into, they should producing things that are friendly.
Uh, that's a tough one, because you're kind of, you're talking about the free enterprise system where you wanted to build a motor. And it's kind of the buyer beware. We have a lot of laws down the regulation, labeling, and et cetera, et cetera. So it'd be nice if we get producers to be more upfront on what they do, but I'm not sure how you're going to regulate that. You can certainly encourage it, but if you start regulating everything, you're going to help, you're going to lean heavy on a free enterprise system.
Okay, well, what I like about this answer is it's sort of reflected in how you describe yourself, and you're very good listener. you describe yourself, and you're very good listener, you catch on very quick, and which of you has the people with a lot of information, and I guess that's, that's, they're good. So, thank you for answering the question.
I would like to give you this opportunity, and you may use it as you like, of course, it's your decision, but can you tell us how and why you think it would be a better council than the major opponents?
I refuse to answer on the grounds of truth. All, all three of us think we can do a good job. I don't think any of us, either any one of us, we think we can do a better job, all think we can do a better job than the other, that's just common, part of being in the race, but I couldn't act as fine why you do a better job in Maui, of course. I think all three of us would do a good job if we got in, and of course, I think I'd do a better job.
Thank you. I don't think I have any others, and I'm extremely similar to them, but what I do know is that my style of working with people, and my knowledge of this place, is what I feel could benefit me on the council. So, I'm not better, I'm just different, I have different, different traits and abilities, and I love working with people, and I love people in general. Thank you.
Well, I certainly think that all of us would do absolutely our best to represent the interests of our district, and I have no doubt that if I drop dead today, one of those two could carry on. But what I think I could bring different is the leadership on the council level that I think is required to bring back the balance of power between the state, the mayor's office, the council, and then those political appointments that have so much to do with how county business is running. And although I understand we need to get along as an island, I would be a leader islandwide, and I think that we need to be able to address the future in a fashion that's far different than we've addressed it so far, and that it's going to require vision and leadership that I am willing to provide.
That was a very good answer, it was an answer down to the wall, and I said, I'll just give you the opportunity to look tomorrow, and I really appreciate those answers. Love it.
Okay, so now you're each going to have a chance to take your closing statement, and I would hope that in that closing statement, you would give environmentalists reasons why they should vote for you. So, I'm an environmentalist, can you tell me why I should vote for you?
Well, I think anybody that's aware of where you live and what's going on has to be an environmentalist, though it isn't just a choice. We'd have to be to keep our planet alive, we'd have to call it toward that, though. I feel, I'm a chairman of the council, I would certainly have a problem working toward, you know, to, to really be an environmentalist, and to what I, what I can, if I have.
I think you should vote for me because of my track record in fighting for, for the Larry Silver people, and saving their, they're doing that all my life, and building websites, and saving the history, and I do support, or do very much support, we need to keep our environment from becoming overly developed in an insensitive way, and I think we can do that, because we have our members like you, we have a community that is very informed, and we also have our local people in the communities, in rural areas, and all of this right now, so, thank you.
Well, I do have a rather long proven record of environmental protection, and one of the things I learned as I went along the way trying to protect the remaining habitat or fragile marine resources was that they are natural resources, that we do need to unfortunately utilize, we're human beings that live off of life, and money does unfortunately make the world go round, so it's important that we understand better how ecosystems function, what a healthy ecosystem is, and how healthy environments actually have extra capacity that nature uses when it's in balance, and it creates a diversity of species, and that's the wealth that's there. And I think that in Hawaii, we need to recognize just how fragile our ecosystem is here, and what we can do to try to restore that balance. Invasive species continue to threaten us every day, and the key to really understanding the health of water sheds is addressing the monoculture, the use of pesticides and herbicides, and the long-term impacts of that sort of approach to the land. If we don't do it here, and if we don't do it soon, I think that we will miss an opportunity to show the world just how special a place this is.
Okay, thank you. On behalf of the state of Hawaii, we'd like to wish you all the best of luck in the upcoming election, and thank you very much for your participation, and we are absolutely sure that everyone is going to make it home safely, just as they made it here.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.